It's 7:30. I'd like to call the order of the city council meeting for Tuesday, February 25th. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. You have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Pardini.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Mayor Quorme is present.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to excuse councilperson Crater?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilperson Crater is excused. Item number five is the approval of the council agenda.
Motion to add item 11A to the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? And a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor of approving the council agenda. Aye.
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 Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Item number six is the public forum. Is there anyone out there that would like to speak with the council on any matter? Please. And speak into the microphone.
My name is Hallie Moore. I own Klyopim Massage Studio here in Maplewood, and I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm here on behalf of the Mid County Chamber of Commerce tonight.
Okay, welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Okay, the public forum is now closed. Are there any announcements?
Um, we have a few announcements. Laura Miller, on March 10th, she's going to be on KTRS radio, uh, radio at 3:30, and she's going to be talking about the Community Paint Day for the Transit Stop in Citizens Park. So, um, she's going to be on the radio talking about that on the 10th. And then, the grand opening of the Heights is March 15th. From 2:00 to 4:00, there'll be ribbon cutting and some free stuff in the grand opening. And then, the Coffee Crow is Saturday, the 21st, and tickets are on sale for $15. And, um, there's morning session and afternoon sessions.
Okay, are there any other announcements? Okay, the next item is the approval of the February 11th council meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any discussion, any clarifications? All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meetings minutes have been approved. Anthony, item number nine.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Karen Delber as interim director to the Deer Creek Community Improvement District, and establishing her term of office is expiring August 21st, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second. How many times a year do they meet?
Typically four.
Are there any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Resolution 20-08 is approved.
Item number 10, please.
Resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to accept the bid of Davy Resource Group in the amount of $3,019... Or pardon me, $3.19 per tree for a citywide tree inventory.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Do we have any idea how many trees we, we have?
Yeah, it was something like, um...
Says in the memo, forty-six hundred.
Forty-six hundred, somewhere around there. So it'll be, you know, the city will probably chip in around $4,000 or $5,000. So we'll take that out of the half-cent capital improvement parks account.
And...
We're getting that based on other cities and the prior tree inventories. Where are we getting that, those figures from?
So there'll be a, uh, a map with the tree locations and the trees will be labeled?
Um...
Or just...
Yeah, well, we're actually going to have a database. And, and so Davy and then the other company that also applied, they have their own software, which we'll use for a year. But there are free apps out there now, which we're going to use simultaneously, um, with the idea that hopefully we won't have to pay for a service to keep it maintained, and we can just do it. Now, all of our employees now have a s- some version of a smartphone, so we can just update it in real time if we add or remove a tree.
When we do this, is it possible, since we don't have an ordinance in place yet, but the idea would be, uh, from my point of view, not only to determine the condition, but determine if it meets criteria for preservation under the new ordinance. When is the, uh, when would they start work?
We have not really discussed that yet with them. Obviously, you'd want to make sure the trees are bloomed and even the late blooming trees to make sure when they go through and do their analysis, probably sometime this summer, late spring.
Okay.
That's, we haven't, we haven't reached out to them with a, a date or time yet to start.
Yeah, it'd probably be a lot more objective if we had in the inventory which trees are qualified for preservation, which ones don't.
So, this'll tell us the condition of the tree as well? Absolutely. Okay, so it's going to have some stats on? Yes. Okay.
And will it be, um, like, will it be, have a spatial locations of the trees? So that we could pull it into GIS, or?
I don't know that, but I can, I can find out.
Or, or another, like, smartphone-based app?
The only trees we're really goin', if, if it's, for example, that's going to be categorized, or a prior inventory was by address, because we're only doing city-owned trees. So it's going to be on the street if it's in a residential neighborhood, uh, or within a park. So, the spatial location will work well for a park, probably, especially larger park.
Yeah.
But for a street tree, as long as we get the address, it's going to say, you know, Elm at, uh, 7401 Sutton. I mean, it's, I don't know, we could probably...
They might be able to geotag them all.
It'd be nice if we could, and we have the ability to do so with our contract with Webster, so I'll look into that.
I'm excited about it.
Uh, is it possible also, uh, to, while they're doing that, to offer those services at $3.19 a tree to, uh, private residents too?
I don't know, but I can talk to Davy Tree and find out.
Okay. I think some people might be interested in understanding...
The, uh, the analysis of, you know...
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
We do that with other, with other contractors. We usually tell them to contact the contractor directly. We don't usually, like, if we're doing a, a new road, they want a driveway and say if you can work that out. Usually through economies of scale, they can save money.
Yeah. And if, if we have a list beforehand of people that are interested, then while they're there, they don't have to make a return trip.
I will contact Davy and find out what they've done in the past or what they'd be willing to do, and if, worst-case scenario, we can put some promotional material so people are aware.
Appreciate it.
They agree to that.
Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Resolution of the city council of the city of Maple, oh, I apologize, uh, let's see, Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Resolution 20-09 is approved.
Item number 11.
Resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to accept the bid from Midwest Pool in court in the amount of $57,900 for a replacement chlorination system, pH adjustment system, and pool chemistry controllers for the Aquanic Center.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Uh, the question I have is that, uh, I'm somewhat familiar with the new technology that's being used in Olympic pools that doesn't use chlorine to sanitize, purify the water. And, uh, yeah, I, I don't know what the cost of these systems are. But they're a lot safer for our children. And so, uh, you know, my guess is that we should probably, you know, take the next year and research that. Because at this point in time, it's probably too late to, you know, to make, uh, major modifications to the, uh, to the process. But, uh, I'll try and get some of that information for you, uh, so that we can see if it's feasible to, to go that route. Now, the, uh, the chlorination system, how long has that been in place?
That was the original system.
Okay, so, so...
Eighteen years.
Okay, so we expect, let's say, eighteen years from the next system, so it's, you know, and I know that the, the Health Department has certain requirements, and we'd have to...
That's what's necessitated this. It's, the Health Department has told us this needs to be replaced.
Yeah, so we need so many parts per million on that.
Because I mentioned to Marty before he left about looking into a salt water pool. I don't know if... I can call Midwest Pool before we move forward with it, but I, I just want to make sure we get the pool open. No, 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 not, not for this year, of course, but, you know, I... I, salt water is much nicer to swim in, I can tell you that. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I was not aware that, that was discussed, but I can look into that.
Are there any other questions about the, uh, pool service?
I had, I had one. I was just curious why you think, you know, like, how one bid, and then if that price, if we're able to determine, is that a fair price for those?
It is a fair price. Um, why we were only given one bid, I don't know. We mailed these out as well. A lot of it is probably timing. There's only so many of these vendors this time of year. They're swamped.
But that's a fair price.
Yes, and Midwest Pool, even if the price was comparable, they're, they know the pool like the back of their hand is a good way to put it. Sam has bailed us out on a number of instances. So he's very familiar with us. He's actually the one who wrote the specs, so he obviously bid on that, and we... We actually, not only post it, we actually mail them as well, or email them to people to try to get additional bids. The preference is to do it in the fall, but we were not aware. And so, uh, the fall, you get more bids.
Right, right.
Spring...
Everyone's in a time crunch now.
Yeah.
And since they're a couple blocks away, I imagine their response time is much better than anyone else would...
Correct. Years ago, we had those grates that we had to put in the Virginia Graham Baker, and it just so happened to be the year that, uh, the pool had solid sheet of ice into March. And we only had so much time to do it to get the pool open. And, uh, a person from the county, they would, they would call Sam up and take him around to other pools to figure out how to design these grate systems. And we had a really unique one underneath our slide that Sam had to design for the county approval. So he really does know that pool, and he knows pools. He's probably one of the best in the region. We're lucky to have him in town and lucky to have him down the street. If we have situations where they have to shock the pool, we just call him in.
I just wanted to make sure it was a, you know, since we didn't have anything to compare it against, that it was...
Correct. I mean, he, he, he submitted that fully anticipating we were going out for a bid.
Okay.
Because prices are usually very comparable.
And this is work that has to be done before we can open the pool for the summer?
Correct.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pardini.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Resolution 20-10 is approved.
Item number 11A. Uh, do you want me to read the proclamation?
Sure.
Okay. It is the proclamation in support of Alex Garcia. Whereas the city council of the city of Maplewood with full support of the mayor urges the United States Department of Homeland, Homeland Security to grant favorable exercise of prosecutorial discretion to Rene Alexander Alex Garcia Maldonado, uh, who is the father of five U.S. citizen children and loving husband of Carleen Carley Garcia, also a U.S. citizen. He has invaluable ties to the state and, and country, and has been displaced and faces family separation due to imminent threats of deportation by the aforementioned, uh, authorities. And whereas the United States has a proud humanitarian tradition since the late 1970s of welcoming refugees of all nationalities and religions, a tradition which is deeply grounded in our most fundamental and deeply held national values. And whereas the city of Maplewood has a longstanding commitment not only to being open and welcoming to immigrants and refugees, but is also to understanding that our immigrant and refugee communities are integral to the life of our city. And whereas Alex Garcia, resident of the country for over 15 years, entered the country fleeing violence and crippling poverty, seeking a better life, is a loving and supportive fi- father of five U.S. citizen children, one of whom lives with Asperger's Disease. And Alex has been the primary breadwinner for his U.S. citizen wife and their family. And whereas the situation has caused an unnatural and unnecessary break in the family system, resulting in trauma to Alex Garcia's wife and five children emotionally, physically, and financially. And whereas Alex Garcia, former resident of Poplar Buff, Missouri, and current resident of the city of Maplewood for the last 29 months, has received refuge from deportation for over two years at Christ Church United Church of Christ in Maplewood. And whereas Missouri State Representative Gina Mittin, the Missouri Mid-South Conference of the United Church of Christ, teachers of the Garcia children, pediatricians, clinical social workers and therapists, clergy and religious leaders, and over 1,500 community members have written and/or signed letters to the Department of Homeland Security and Immigration and Customs Enforcement in support of Alex Garcia. And whereas Congressman William Lacy Clay Jr. has publicly supported and advocated for this family's reunification and permanent protection in the country, and his, and has introduced House Resolution 3750, which would provide a path of citizenship for Alex and enable him to return to life with his family in Missouri. And whereas deportation to Honduras is life-threatening for his family, as post-election violence and political unrest, as well as pervasive poverty and social instability have severely worsened since ni- 2009, and would mean permanent separation from his family, community, and church. And whereas senseless deportations like that seeking to separate the Garcia family forever go against our humanitarian principles and unnecessarily place lives of U.S. citizens and foreign-born family members in danger. And whereas according to a former memorandum by the Department of Homeland Security, Alex should be a low-level priority for deportation, that if not but for political agendas, has been withdrawn. And whereas the Immigrations and Customs Enforcement is invested with discretion not to pursue or to defer immigration enforcement activities when the interest served by deportation is not substantial or is outweighed by considerations including the presence of sympathetic factors, many of which are evident in Alex's case as outlined above. Now therefore be it resolved. Section one, uh, Maplewood City Council joins and affirms the leadership of the National Movement of the Congregations of Faith, providing refuge to people, including Alex Garcia, among others, displaced due to imminent threats of deportation. And the, the city council affirms the right of the family's stability for all residents as they are afforded equal opportunity regardless of race, color, religion, sex, age, disability, familial status, national origin, or political affiliation. And the Maplewood City Council urges the Missouri Congressional Deleg- Delegation on Capitol Hill to urgently and swiftly move private bills such as House HR 3750 to stop deportation of Alex Garcia and all others forced to live in sanctuary so that they all may resume life with their families in the United States immediately without the threat of deportation and with permanent protection against such devastation in the future. The Maplewood City Council implores the United States Department of Homeland Security to grant favorable exercise, exercise of prosecutorial discretion to Rene Alexander Alex Garcia Maldonado, so he can immediately return to providing for and supporting his family, including his U.S. citizen children and wife.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Uh, is this a roll call or a voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes, and I will be presenting the proclamation at the county, at the, uh, federal courthouse Thursday morning with, with the rest of the delegation. Item number 12 is council communication. Are there any communications?
Not for me.
Yes.
I had one. Um, I had brought up a couple months ago after we gone to Richmond Heights City Council meeting, how they have a, a public forum section at the end of the meeting too. And I think most people were on board with that, and I just wanted to follow up and see if that was still the case and what the process is to get that incorporated into the agenda. It's nice to give people an opportunity to sort of follow up, you know, because they talk first, and then we talk about a bunch of stuff. It kind of lets them follow up without, you know...
As long as we can eliminate them 15 minutes or less.
Well, three, oh, total, no, three. They still get their three, right? Yeah. Um, but I just didn't know what, what we had to do. I wasn't familiar with how that...
Well, that must be a question for, uh, someone at the table there.
We can just add it to the agenda?
Yeah, I'm, I'm for that.
I have no problem with that, and, you know, if it does cause a problem for some reason, then we can revisit it. But, you know, the idea of giving people an opportunity to comment on, uh, items that we talk about.
Quick question for, uh, to make sure I get what you guys are looking for here. Are we talking about, would that be after item 11A, or are we talking about after the reports?
Um, I think it's, I think it's after, like, 11A. I can go back and look at their agenda, sort of where they had it, but it makes sense to me after...
Just want to shoot me an email, and I'll have it on the next agenda?
Because it's, I think a lot of times people would have something to say once they hear us ta- you know, talk about it, to have to talk about it preemptively before we do.
Placing at that point too allows us, in our council communication, mayor's communication, to address those issues.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
It'll be after the resolutions and ordinances next meeting.
Okay.
Let's send you, let you tell me different.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would appreciate it if you would check where they, where they do.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I will.
But it would make most sense before we...
Yeah, I think that's a good spot.
Okay.
Sorry, one other thing. I saw, you know, we got the summary and, um, all the stuff from our town hall online, which is great. Thank you. I guess I just wanted to follow up and see, you know, next steps, because I didn't want to lose our momentum on that. I didn't know if, sort of what the plan was, if we could, like, create some sort of update? You know, page or anthem, that's probably...
I can tell you right now, we talked about a lot of the items, and most of the action items or questions were in reference to the police, and they're already working on, uh, updates for that, which we will provide to the council first, and then if we need to post them, it's really whatever you guys want.
Do you... But I, like, there was things like, you know, the, people wanted to see the splash pad drawing, you know, I just, things like that, that we can notify, like, if we can put them up there. Some of the things, and like, a lot of them had commonality, like, issues on Lowmire, or I just didn't know, too, if we as a group, in order to address them once, if we wanted to, like, split up among topics and sort of keep those, follow up on those things, and I don't know, just, I didn't want to lose the value of what people shared with us in following up on that.
We can absolutely go through each one.
I mean, I...
And try to get a overall report or an update.
Yeah, I mean, we can, you know, help with that, too. I know that's a large burden, and some of the things aren't, you know, will take time.
We can get that, and we can send it out to you similar to what we did with the town hall notes and see if there's something that, because honestly, the council was in there having most of those discussions and facilitating that process. So what we'll do is we'll try to capture what we can from the notes, send it out to you.
Okay.
And then we can do the same thing we did with the town hall notes if everyone agrees. You can add to or...
Okay.
Track from the report, and then we can try to get a city report.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
City update or city follow-up, we can call it. And then we can send out an email blast for those of you who attended or anyone that's interested or viewed it online. We've updated and taken some action items on these items, or we've at least tried to address these as best as we can. And some of the items may say, we're still looking into these.
Yeah, and that's the thing, just letting them know that we heard them and that we're...
When is the next, when is the next maple leaf come out?
We have one in the spring. I believe it's in April, but I'll find out.
Because maybe we could use a page in the maple leaf to, to give some, some updates on some of the topics.
Aren't you gonna, I would imagine the maple leaf would come out post-election? Um, I know that the next big thing's going to be the fire is going to be in there. I think we're going to do a separate one for that. I think it's actually post, yeah. We typically do one, that's why I said it's usually in April sometime, is usually when it comes out. So, again, we'll get something, send it out, try to do the same thing we did previously, and then hopefully everyone will be in agreement, and then we can post it.
Thank you.
It's a good idea. I don't care if you guys want to have another one. It's council's decision, but it may not be a bad time to think about it. I know there was a session of August. Or, I think we all agreed, January, February, that late January was a good time of year, because people are around, or if you have it in the summer, maybe people are on vacation and it's tough. But, I mean, it's never too early to be thinking about if you want to do it again. I, I was surprised, pleasantly surprised with how well it was attended. I think another one is a good idea.
I would love to do an annual, at, at least the annual town hall. I thought the January timing was pretty great. I know, and we've also talked about...
I thought it'd be nice to just check in again.
Yeah.
This is, you know, you brought us all this, but, and also if we're, you know, regularly updating on the website, that's good, too, but...
Yeah, I'm open to, um, a mid-year check-in with, like, town hall or, um, I don't know.
Or could be a little, like, a topic, or...
Yeah. I would love to do, um, we've talked a little bit and haven't decided anything about, um, adding more topical work sessions on, like, housing, or, you know, maybe that's a couple work sessions. Um, we could, you know, I would love to do some work sessions. Not, you know, whenever we can slot that in based on all the other work that we're going to have going on in the near term.
Whenever, as we're talking about it, we're going to have a lot of work session, we're going to have a lot of budget work sessions, we'll be together, we'll be having this discussion. I'm just saying this is something to think about, um, if it's something the council wants to, to move forward with. It's, it's, it's very simple for staff. We can get this together. If you guys want to do it, we'll take care of it. Just let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council communication? With regards to ma- I'm sorry.
I was just going to mention that I attended the school board meeting, um, last Thursday night. It was a marathon session. They went past midnight, um, I learned. Full disclosure, I left at 9:30. But, um, uh, again, uh, some, some great items on the school board agenda, and that is also available online for everyone. And they do, uh, post their meetings on Facebook as well, so...
So, um, Councilmember Phillips, what happened at 11:05?
Pretty sure they were in executive session by that point.
Don't they have another town hall meeting coming up, uh, March 24th, maybe, or something like that?
Yeah, for Proposition E. It's at the ECC, I know, this one, I know.
Oh, is it at the ECC? Okay.
They also passed the new board policy on equity. And, um, in the article about that, Dr. Hall referenced how the Fourth through Ferguson racial equity framework was one of their guiding, um, guiding stars in, in that process and developing it. And that equity policy got, um, some press late last week, and it's a really exciting development.
Any other council communications? Mayor's report, uh, I attended the first portion of the movie night at the Firehouse on Saturday night. We had about 49 kids and, and almost as many parents, so it was, uh... It was Lion King. Good, I was, the thing I was there, because, uh, the firemen didn't know how to adjust the sound. The Transit Stop, that project has started. I've seen demolition going on there. I sent around an email to council members with regards, regards to, uh, a nomination for the Special Business District Board. Is there, and I know we talked about, uh, you know, modifying the process, but, uh, I would, you know, uh, can we move forward with the SBD nomination? Does anyone have any objection?
Um, I, I don't have an objection. I have a, like, a comment. I, and I don't want to interrupt something if this, if this was already in play before we talked about a process, um, potential change to the process. I think anytime we have an opening, it's an opportunity to ask who's here and who's missing on our boards and commissions, and is our community represented on the, the relevant board and commission? Um, and, uh, are, you know, are we satisfied with the representation? So, you know, do we have, um, you know, it's an opportunity to ask, do we, do we have, um, women and minority-owned businesses in our community? And are they represented on our boards and commissions? And, and any, I think, any of our commissions, that we can always be asking that question. So, but I, um, don't have any objection to moving forward with the nomination.
And on this one, the special business... And on this one, the Special Business District, these are business owners, so these aren't necessarily, you know, residents of Maplewood. And so in this particular case, I'm trying to remember, Sheila is on SBD. I don't have the list of other people, in fact.
David Schlafler, Chris Peoples is going to get off. I can't think of the rest.
A woman that owns Seaford Media is on. I don't remember her name.
Nikki, yeah. Yeah, so...
How far down does the SBD go on Sutton?
SBD goes down to probably, it doesn't go all the way down to Greenwood, does it?
It does not. It goes, I think it goes only to, not even to Elm.
I think, I think...
I think it's Flora.
I think the old Moose Lodge wasn't in it.
Yeah, it might even be the one before the street before that maple.
And then obviously it goes...
You can tell where the lights are.
Honestly, where it was, when it was created.
The lights that we have, where they stop. No, seriously, that's the end of the S, that's the end of the SBD district.
And when it was created, there was no business down there when it was created, except Foley's might have been the lone business down there at the time. I think it's been since 86, when that was created.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Just to clarify though, yeah, I didn't have an objection to this one, but going forward, like, we still have a planning and zoning opening? Is that correct or no?
No, it's a park board, is my understanding.
Oh, par, that's what I meant, sorry, park board. Is that one still vacant and we don't, okay, so like, that would probably be a good one to start with, I think, with the new process?
And I will take the time to interject, to let everyone know that the park board is, I've got a park board member here, Bob Harsh, if he wants to, if you have any...